Okay, being 7:30, I call this meeting to order. This is a virtual board meeting and this meeting is held on video conference following our examination of the interior of the library. And due to the pandemic, it will be not feasible to have the full board in the library. Jennifer Rolko, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Here.
Ms. Krishnam?
Here.
Mr. Globinger?
I'm here.
Mr. Parsi?
Here.
Ms. Shu?
Here.
Ms. Young? Mr. Fromm?
Here, thank you, Jennifer. And now we're going to the consent agenda. Is there anything you want to take out of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I ask you for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Who was that?
Second it.
Okay, Rolko, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parsi?
Yes.
Ms. Shu? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes, thank you. We're going for public comment. Brody, is there any comments from the public? Going once?
I do not see any comments in the chat at this point in time.
Thank you. With the consent of the board, I'm moving item number seven immediately now so that Ed Tracy can present us the audit. Please.
Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight. Like this meeting, we did a majority of our audit remotely this year with the electronic exchange of information with Anna and her staff. We certainly appreciated the assistance they gave us to make that happen. This year's audit, there weren't any new standards that had been implemented this year. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control that we need to present. Our management letter just kind of highlighted some new standards that will become effective in the next few years. As far as adjustments, we made a couple of adjustments to the government-wide financial statements, which is not the fund statements that you're normally used to seeing. This is the full accrual statements that I've brought it. There was an adjustment to the net pension liability from I R F where we adjusted to actual. Now, the library's part of the villages is with the village in their determination of net pension liability. And the village then allocates a portion to the library based on the annual contributions that are being made by library for library employees versus village employees. And that percentage is a little under 20%. That net pension liability went down this year by about, I'm sorry, net pension liability went up by about 50,000. Or at least the adjustments to the expenses, it hits the liability and deferred inflows and outflows. There was also an adjustment to the net O P E B liability, which is based on an actuarial evaluation which we got during the course of the audit. So it wasn't received at the start, so that's why it was an adjustment. That reduced expenses by about 37,000. And then there was an adjustment to interest payable in the government-wide statements because interest in the fund statements is recognized at the time it's paid. Interest in the government-wide statements is recognized evenly throughout the year. And so each year we kind of adjust any payable that incurred to date, occurred to the end of the year, but would be paid with the next installment. And so there was an additional interest payable this year because of the new bond issue of about just under 60,000 to the government-wide financial statements. As far as the financial statements themselves are concerned, our audit report was an unmodified opinion, which is, you know, the highest form of assurance that we can give that statements are fairly presented. Couple items of note, and again, when I talk about the government-wide financial statements, these are like the full accrual statements. And when the statement in that position, which is page eight of the report, it's page 13 of my PDF. Just a couple of notes, cash and investments were up by about 4.7 million this year. That, of course, is due in large part to the bonds that were issued near towards the later part of the year and as well as a positive bottom line on a full group basis of about 860,000. Receivables, which were just over 4 million, that represents the second installment on the 2019 property tax levy. Capital assets were up a little bit as additions to capital assets were about 1.5 million. Depreciation was about 1.4 million. So there's slight increase in capital assets. And that's kind of a good indicator that you're keeping your facilities up if you see depreciation expense and additions being roughly the same. It's just kind of a way of seeing that you're kind of maintaining your properties and your equipment and the like. Couple other items of note, within that statement, non-current liabilities increased from 12 to 12.3 million from 10.35 million. That's largely due to the new bond issue of 3.8 million. But that was offset by a decrease in the net pension liability of 1.8 million. So that net pension liability due to, if to the I R F plan, came down by, came down from like 3.4 million to 1, or 3.2 million to 1.4 million, largely due to some strong earnings and investments being held by I R F. As I mentioned before, on a full accrual basis, you had a positive bottom line of 864,000. I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of other things in the governmental funds. So when we're looking at things from a fund perspective, which is kind of what you're used to seeing when you, throughout the year, the general fund had a positive bottom line of about 465,000 this year. And that was after a transfer to the capital improvement fund of 730,000 and another transfer of 15, or almost 16,000 to debt service fund. Revenue was just slightly over budget by about less than a percent, less than 1%. And expenses were about 8.2% under budget. And your ending fund balance in the general fund was a little over 60% of your annual expenses. Couple of the other funds, really quickly, the I R F FICA fund had a positive bottom line of about 128,000. The ending fund balance there was about 83% of your annual expenses. And then the capital improvement fund, the ending fund balance at the end of the year was a little over $6 million, 6.6177, which, you know, that was a significant increase from the prior year due largely to the bond issue. Again, a $3.8 million bond issue, which is also, there was a premium received with that bond issue of about 250,000 as well. So that, you know, obviously in a fund like the capital improvement fund will go up significantly in the year you issue bonds and then will gradually come down as you, as you work off those proceeds. As I mentioned, the I R F net pension liability decreased by 1.8 million. It's net, the I R F pension was 93.18% funded at 123119. And that was up from about 83.5 in the prior year. And your total O P E B liability, which is an unfunded liability, so it's an actuarial calculation, but it's kind of handled on a pay-as-you-go basis, decreased from 497,000 to 459,000 this year. But again, wanted to thank Anna and her, and Kate and everyone for their assistance during the audit this year. And appreciated, certainly appreciated the cooperation we got under unusual circumstances.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 audit as presented. So moved. Thank you, second?
Second. Second. I'll second it.
Yes, okay, I'll let you.
Yes.
Jennifer Rolko, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parsi?
Yes.
Ms. Shu? Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for your services. We appreciate it. You can leave if you want, or you can stay if you want. Stop reports, Kate.
Yeah, so I don't have anything that isn't in my monthly report. The reopening continues to go as well, to go well. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to leave a lot of time for Linda Varing, our marketing and communication supervisor, to talk with us about what we've been doing to keep the community up to date on all of our happenings during the crisis. So if no one has any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Linda.
Hello. All right, I'm going to share my computer with you, which I'm hoping I'm sharing the right screen.
You have some echo in your voice, but.
Oh, okay. How is that sounding now? Is it okay?
Yeah.
And can you all see the screen that says marketing and communication? All right, so today I'm here to talk about the approach that we take to communicating all of the library's wonderful programs and services, as well as sharing all of our important information with the community. In the past year, we've experienced a building closure due to the pandemic, renovations that affected our parking lots, policy changes like going fine-free, and social issues such as Kate's anti-racism statement, and much more. Because 2020 was quite a year. Because we know not everyone reads our newsletter or opens our emails, we try to reach as many people as we can using different channels. So we spend a lot of time working with our departments to get information from them and determine the best way to communicate that information to our patrons. So when the building was open back in March, we were able to take advantage of the space it provided for posters, having the flyers at service desk, shelf talkers in the stacks and bookmarks. And although we're not currently using the library's interior to promote our programs and services, we're still using it to communicate important safety information, like where to stand or what not to touch. We're also using the signs in the parking lot and banners along the fences to communicate to people who may not be even getting our message through our other channels. So since the pandemic, we've switched our marketing emphasis from print to digital graphics. And we've also worked with various departments to use videos to help promote the library's resources. So the rule of seven says someone needs to hear a message seven times before they'll take an action. And while we know seven isn't a magic number, it is important to funnel information to help shape the message that we're trying to send. So an example of awareness is at the top of this funnel is our newsletter, which is emailed to about 12,000 Northbrook households every other month. And we add as much information as we can to each issue, including appropriate messages about changes to services or new offerings, or databases, or e-resources, and of course, our books and programs. And that's the first way that we try to create awareness in the community. And sometimes it is enough to get someone to act, but it's not always that. So to support and amplify the message, we may also create a poster, a flyer, or post on social media, or have it occupy a spot on our homepage, put out a press release, or do all of these things. And as it gets closer to the date, the promotion may get included in an email, which gives people an easy way for them to take action, like clicking a link to download information or signing up for the program, or just learning more about the library. And after the email goes out, it's really fun because I get to see when people have read it and how they're reacting to it, including which links are the most popular. And then I can look into Municho and actually see the numbers increasing for some of the sign-ups. So it's a fun way to watch people sign up. And I also get reports about our databases to see if there's an increased activity after emails go out. So this broad to narrow promotion also serves as a funnel to help distill and concentrate our messages. All right, so how do we decide what to promote? Oops. Approximately two and a half months before we send out the newsletter, we meet with departments and they share their information to us, the marketing team, about their programs and services and how they would like those to be promoted, or if we just need to increase some awareness of a program or service. And then I use that information to develop what we call promotional plans that help direct us in terms of our content and graphics, and also tell us when and where messaging should occur. So while we're working ahead to plan and execute future events, because we're always working on the future in the news, that we're also constantly using those promo plans to promote our current events. And then that cycle continues throughout the year. In addition to the programs and services, we're also scheduling marketing and communication plans for databases and e-resources for library-wide events and other information like building renovation, system downtime, and changes to services. And a little more about our email communication. Here we go. We currently have six email lists that are available to our patrons. So for example, when we send out an email to our alert list, it goes to over 16,000 contacts. It's almost everyone that has a library card. And some of our other lists are smaller, including our maker programs list and our team list. So when someone signs up for a library card, they have a chance to get added to our email list. It's an opt-in option. So when someone's added, they receive an email that allows them to select which list they'd like to be on. And then they can always change this by clicking on a link that's in each email that they receive from us. In addition to these lists, we also create a number of one-off emails for various reasons, like surveys or to let people know about service changes that may affect them specifically. So each month, we send out at least two library-wide emails, one youth email and one teen email. And then we also send out maker and Northbrook emails about once a quarter and alert emails multiple times a year. And these numbers here that you see on the slide, the eight to 10 emails each month, that's not set in stone because when the building closed last March, we went from sending four or five email campaigns a month to 10 or 11. And in March alone, we sent 14. And this next slide is an example of our email and open click rate. And I'm just showing that for the latest alert email that we sent out. So that's the big one that goes out to 16,000 people. And the 44.7% open rate is actually pretty impressive. And even our average campaign performance open rate of 40.7 that you see there is pretty high when compared with other organizations like ours. And actually, in the marketing world, a successful email campaign open rate is generally about 15 to 25%. And now a little bit about social media. So we find that we get a lot of traction on social media, receiving our highest reach and engagement on Facebook with Instagram following it. So for an example, I just picked an average day, September 9th. We had a Facebook post that reached 292 people ages 18 to 34, 653 people between the ages of 35 and 54, and 193 people ages 55 and up. So that's a pretty good selection of people. So when, on the day that I grabbed those numbers, we had actually published an article about our back-to-school support, which also coincided with the messaging going out on Instagram and also by email and catch and on our homepage. We have slightly less Instagram followers and the followers are not all as local as our Facebook followers tend to be. However, Instagram is important in reaching our younger audiences that we don't reach on Facebook because it's estimated that 75% of 18 to 24-year-olds use Instagram. And then in terms of Twitter and YouTube, we're also posting on each of those. And we've been seeing quite a lot of activity lately on our YouTube channel, probably because we started posting more videos during the time that people were working from home. And we started keeping people informed with what was going on with the library and also letting people see their favorite library staff by doing more staff videos. All right. So this is just a snapshot of our Facebook analytics dashboard. And to talk a little more about videos, this graphic shows the average reach of our Facebook posts. And as you can see, if you see the graph at the top, video posts are outperforming photo-only posts in terms of reach and engagement, which means that they're receiving a higher number of likes, comments, and shares. And some other marketing and communication channels. Some of those include the organizations, oops, I got to advance the slide. First, the organizations that you can see here, which also help us amplify our message messaging in the community. And although there's been a lot of changes recently with our local newspapers, we've developed a strong relationship with both and were able to pitch them stories. And they've also recently started reaching out to us to ask for information and quotes and photos. And in addition to that, I'm part of the Northbrook Communicators Group, which includes communication professionals from the village, park district, local school districts, and others, which meets quarterly to discuss communication strategies and solutions. And we also help support each other's communication efforts, which also help strengthen the reach of our messages. For example, Susan Wolf and I met today with Cheryl from the village. And we worked together to develop a communication plan around the upcoming general election and getting that information out. We're also able to reach out to our local partners to communicate library opportunities, our information that may directly affect them, and we also help to support their events when possible. And during normal times, we're in the community about 15, at about 15 events around Northbrook each year. Word of mouth is also important to marketing and communication. And so when we have an important message to communicate to our patrons, like when our building was going through its reopening stages or recent, our recent system downtime, we create a series of talking points that then we share with every staff member. And then we also provide this information by email on our website and via social media. And the reason why we do the talking points is just to ensure that whether someone calls in by phone or they're visiting a service desk, that they're going to hear the same information that we're communicating through our other channels. And then, of course, content marketing, which is also known as storytelling or telling our library stories. So in a similar fashion to word of mouth, content marketing is another important way that we reach our patrons. In each newsletter, we try to feature a library story or a patron story. And these stories provide a meaningful way to share a message that really resonates within the community, whether it's our approach to accessibility or retired teachers' love of reading, which we were then able to use to encourage others to sign up for winter reading last year. In addition to appearing in our newsletter, we often show these stories by website and by email and our website and by taking advantage of multi-channel communication or, wait for it, full surround marketing. So during the pandemic, people have found themselves faced with a barrage of messaging. And that's why multi-channel approach is important to focus and filter our message to help keep the community as connected with the library as possible. And now I have a little of time for questions. So if anyone has any question about our marketing or communication, I am open, I'm all ears.
Okay. Can you take over the screen so we can see everybody?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Linda, just a quick question about your social media. I didn't see LinkedIn on there. And I know you guys have a LinkedIn account, but maybe that's not a very effective way for engagement.
We do have a LinkedIn account. We've just not been actively posting to that, but it is something that we're going to be looking into in the future.
Go ahead.
I must say that I'm very, very impressed with the thoroughness of your approach to marketing and the plans and how you're executing that. That's quite a, quite a job. Thank you. You've done great. One question that I have is, there was a section about unsubscribe. Do we have any statistics about unsubscribers?
We do, we can post statistics for unsubscribers. And we do notice that in our larger email campaigns, such as the alerts, that we do see more unsubscribes, but that's to be expected because, especially with the frequency of emails that we were sending out during the reopening campaign, some people were getting just enough information, other people probably felt like they were getting a little more than they were interested in.
Yeah.
But they do always have that ability to unsubscribe and re-subscribe. So we hope that we're not losing too many people. It's hard to find that perfect balance between.
Yeah, no, I understand that. When they have unsubscribed, do they have choices? I want only emails about Maker and about this or that and nothing else, or something like that?
They can choose a different segment, but if they unsubscribe, they unsubscribe for everything. It doesn't give them that option. I've seen some other email systems that do provide that, but ours does not provide that option that says, do you really want to unsubscribe?
I am subscribed quite often about all kinds of letters that I get. And sometimes they give you an option. Would you like all of it or just part of it, or these emails, yes, but not offers or no sales items or something like that?
Or frequency, yeah, there's a lot of different variations.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very, very much, appreciate it. Brody, do we have any comments so far?
Yeah, we did have a comment that was posted to the chat earlier from John Albrecht. The comment is, the request is for a Go Green Agenda item in October.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to.
Carlos, I think Abby had a question for Linda.
Oh, I'm sorry, Abby.
That's okay, thanks, Kate. I don't, oh, there you go, Linda. This is something that businesses use, but I just wanted to ask about TikTok since I see it everywhere. I don't personally use that. Is that, I mean, I can see if the library were open, you could do little videos of people actually showing the interactions within the library or the collaboratory, which would be kind of cool. Is that something that's on your roadmap for the future?
It's not currently on my roadmap. I've been doing a lot of research on it and talking to other libraries about how they're using it as well. And there, people are really kind of waiting a little bit. There was some, there was some thought that there was, it maybe wasn't as secure as it needed to be. And also, we found the same issue when we talked about Snapchat. There's some, it's just sometimes difficult to see if it's really going to be a great promotional vehicle. But it's definitely not out of the question. It's something we'll continue to research and watch. And if we feel like that's the way it's moving, because it's that moving target with these younger kids, you know? I mean, they are so hard to reach because they're not on, the really young ones are not on Instagram and they're not, you know, TikTok is where they're at.
I think they're all on TikTok.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very, very much, Linda, we appreciate that. We're going to continue with the boiler, another interesting report. Go ahead, Anna.
It's not that interesting.
I know.
But mechanical concepts and color design have determined, or are waiting to get equipment this week. And then they plan to meet next week to finalize the plan. So we are moving forward.
Excellent. Any questions? None. E D I. Everybody saw the draft of their proposed, what do you call that?
Resolution?
A resolution? Any comments?
Carlos, I thought it was very well written.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody else?
I feel like it's a little bit overpowering, in my opinion. And I guess, I'm a little confused, like the things that we say are priorities that's coming up. I feel like, other than one, isn't that something we are already doing? I'm just not sure we're communicating the right message. There's like, it's almost, it reads to me like we're almost negating what we have done and we have been doing. I'm all about, you know, continue to reflect, assess, and we should continue to improve. But I think we're doing pretty well right now. I'm not sure, but it doesn't read to me that is communicating the message I would have liked to communicate.
Okay. Any other?
It's very well written and very powerful.
Any other comments from the board?
Carlos, could I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask Jamie, kind of, could you maybe provide a little more insight into what you were hoping for?
Like, for example, like if we just look at the last sentence, number nine, developing marketing strategies and campaigns that are inclusive and diverse. Isn't that something we're right now doing? And are we trying to say that we're looking for new and better ways of doing it? Or are we saying right now we're not being inclusive and diverse?
I mean, I think it might be a little bit of both. I know, like when we talk about the newsletter, we try to have photos and information in it that represents people from different segments of the population. But we don't have an actual strategy for doing that. And it's more of like, I don't want to say that it's an afterthought, but it's not top of mind. It's not something that we're making a priority. And so it's more shifting the focus away. It's not that we're not doing stuff, but it isn't like the priority to do it. And so this kind of shifts it towards. And so this kind of shifts it towards making it more of a priority. Does that make sense?
Who's going to see these?
The resolution?
Yeah.
Everyone. Hopefully, everyone.
How?
Well, remember what Linda just told us?
Yes. Are you going to broadcast it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from that? Sharon, I saw you.
Well, you know, I, 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 I sort of agree with Jamie too. I know we had talked about this before of, you know, what we were going to do about this. I feel like, I, I feel like it is strong, but maybe too strong and sustainable. I don't know. You know, obviously assessing and diversifying collections is sustainable, but I just, I really, I, I just had some issues with maybe how strong it is.
I personally had an issue with two words, which I thought were redundant, white supremacy. If we are talking about racial discrimination and everything else, I don't think that we need to include those words, which may be trigger words for other people. So I would rather take those out. It will not affect the state, the statement in, in, in everything. It's just.
Agreed.
It's like Sharon said, it's too much. Any other comments?
Can we just add?
And number three, number three, addressing systematic racism.
The problem is that, like, are we saying, like, what exactly are we referring to? Like, can I ask, what is the systematic racism within the library right now that we're trying to?
And racial equality, have we not?
Been equal and fair to people? I meant, like, I don't know, it's just.
I think the term systemic racism, I think, is we're referring to the fact that almost all systems that we have in the United States are, because of the, are inherently racist because of the way they were created. And I think that's what it's referring to. I don't think it's.
You're talking about it as a context of just the library living in 2020.
Yes, exactly. But it's not, it's not that signaling out, it's not just that Northbrook is. I mean, it's just that our system is.
Right, but it clearly, right, I understand from a global perspective or, you know, what you're saying, but you're putting this on, you know, library letterhead. So you're, right, to me.
You, you, you think it's admitting faults. Do you think it's admitting faults? Is that the way it reads to you, like admitting?
Right. A plan for working towards racial equality.
Yeah, I, I actually see both sides of this one because I see that we don't want to say it in the way that makes it sound like we're recognizing that we have it. But as a broader context, I think the point is that you can't ignore the fact that it exists. So.
AI recommends is we don't have a need to vote on this at this point. Actually, there is no request for a motion to do anything. Can we table it and have the Maura and Kayhan and Kate that wrote that to see if they can come up with something that would satisfy Jamie, Abby, and Sharon?
Can I just make one more comment? So I definitely agree that it's very well written and very powerful. If we're talking about publishing this, though, on social media channels, I think then in that case, it might be a bit much because no one's going to read the whole thing. So I think I'd like to understand, is this something that, how is this going to live? Is it become part of our, our library documentation? Or is it something we're trying to promote? Because I think those are two very different things. And if it's just something that we want to express, get in front of it with the public and have them hear our voice, then I think we'd be writing something totally different. So maybe if we could clarify, what are we really trying to accomplish? Maybe that would help.
If I hear you correctly, Abby, I think that your fear is that this will be read by a very large population that may not be understanding of everything that we say. It's different than to do something for a small organization internally. This is for the public, and for the public, we need to be more concise and perhaps more just a statement and a letter go at that.
That's what I thought we were going to do, is more of like a public statement. So I was thinking more like five lines or something like that. But this could be useful for, you know, within our organization, like you're saying. So what do we feel the, what do we feel we're trying to accomplish with this statement? That would help me understand and provide feedback better. I know we talked about this, but.
I just wanted to ask, when, when a number of libraries earlier this year issued, and it wasn't just libraries, I mean, every institution was issuing statements in light of what was happening with these social protests. That's already happened, right?
Right.
I mean, that, that statement's already happened.
Right. And when I read the ones from Evanston, I felt like that is a little bit more of what I had in mind stating where we stand and how, like, this relates to our specific steps we're going to take to kind of go down this path to make a better world. But this just seems like, I don't know, very big to me. And then, you know, speaking just from a woman of color, it, like, it's not, it's not, like, it's not relatable to me. It doesn't speak to me. Like, I, what exactly, like, it's not concise in terms of specific or specific. I don't know how to best describe it, but I also kind of agree with Abby. If we are trying to say the first part of our mission, which is like where the board stands, that should be a lot, that should be like a quarter of what we said, like, should be a lot more concise than that.
Can I ask one more question? Who, who, who wrote it? Not who is responsible for it, but obviously by the language, there, this was written by someone with some sort of experience?
I, I worked on the first draft, which I took pieces of from the different samples that I had provided to the board. And then Maura and Kayhan and I all met and we made further tweaks together as a group.
Okay, I just wondered because it is, it's written very, very well.
Jay, you have it into a.
Yeah, Carlos, I mean, when I read it, I really read it as being more of a mission statement than anything else. Especially the end part, the final resolution, where it kind of goes through the different steps. And I saw that as kind of following the lines, what we did was a year and a half ago when we did the big plan and put together, you know, the whole, I don't want to call it a mission statement, but the whole plan for the library in terms of what we've been trying to do in terms of communications and structures. And so I didn't see it necessarily as being something that you would, you know, send out as a article, but I saw it as something that was a, you know, strong message from, say, the board to the staff is to, here's the values that we hold, and here's what we expect from you in terms of internal, external activities, communications, procedures, you know, overarching in terms of the entire operations of the library. And so that's why I thought it was well-written, because it really addressed a global aspect of how we operate and, you know, internally, what we do, policies and procedures, and externally, and it sets expectations. That's not to say it's practical, because I think Jamie's right. When you read it, you aren't going to say, well, you know, this means that from a hiring perspective, here's what we're going to do to change our hiring practices. But it provides guidance to the human resources to say, you need to take in consideration that our systems have been designed in a way that may enforce systematic racism. So you need to try and come up with ideas as to how to address that within your hiring practices. You know, when you're reviewing procedures, how do you, you know, take this into consideration? And so that's what I thought it did for the library.
And can I add just one other thing? I mean, you know, these statements oftentimes, they, they feel overly aspirational. And I think that's part of the challenge, is how to make the, kind of strike a balance between being aspirational and really trying to move ourselves forward, but also saying things that are, you know, I mean, feasible or doable. And so I don't know if that's part of the, part of the challenge here is crafting something that is not just concise, but something that kind of captures both of these. Or, you know, because we don't want to just say, hey, everything's great. Let's just embrace the status quo, right? I mean, we want to be bold, but we want to also lay out steps that are, you know, reasonable, feasible, and doable.
Um. Go ahead, Mira.
Okay. So there's, and taking some notes, I'm wondering, and this is, doesn't help us be more concise, but I'm wondering if we want to have something, if we think we are, I don't want to say offend people, but do we want to emphasize a, an open dialogue about these issues? And again, maybe this isn't the time to be adding things, but, because I don't think everyone is going to read this and embrace this. But that, I think what we might, or personally, what I feel is important, that people be able to have these uncomfortable, difficult conversations. And to recognize that not everyone.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we are, we need to push people into having a conversation. People have to decide on themselves. They want to have a conversation. And what I hear from our trustees is that perhaps we have two statements in here. One, like Jay described it, and I think that Jamie and Abby and Sharon will concur, is that this could be a good internal addition to our, to our modus operandi, let's say. If we want to say something else outside, then maybe we need to encourage Linda to be part of this discussion on what kind of message we can bring out to the public to say, we hear what people want to discuss and we are happy to offer the, the library as a place to look for data and information. And, and that's it. We cannot encourage discussion because that's not our job. That could be politicized. We're trying to stay away from it.
I, I like that idea. And I like Jay's idea or thought of, it's a mission statement, right? So a mission statement. So can't we just use, you know, even just that last period, that last paragraph of, you know, public library condemns racism, racial violence, I would take out white supremacy, hate speech bigotry and social injustice? I mean, just a mission statement. And that's okay to send to the public.
Right. But Sharon, I don't want to design a mission statement by a committee this large because it becomes, you know, a horse designed by a committee becomes a camel. So if you guys want to go back and we work this out into a mission statement or that can be added, like Jay suggested, to our mission statement, that would be terrific and we can review it next, next month. And at the same time, if you want to say something publicly, let's get Linda involved so that we can see what kind of message, without going out immediately without our approval, let's bring it out also next month and discuss both items separate. One is to the public, one is internally to us. Fair enough. Agreed.
So would it be helpful for everyone to give feedback on this draft?
Yeah, I think that you guys can work it out and.
Well, I think, I'm afraid we're going to end up going in circles. Maybe if, I, Kayhan, if, if everyone were to sort of give their sort of opinion on this, then we can kind of take that into consideration. But I just, I don't want to see it to be next February and we're still talking in circles.
But I think, I think it would be, I mean, like I said, when, when we were doing this with our professional society, you know, it was basically a committee of me and a couple of other board members. We had a draft and then shared it with the rest of the board. The president then did some work on it, and then the whole board had an opportunity to weigh in. And, you know, it shouldn't take, you know, five months. I mean, I think if people, you know, just spend a little bit of time with this, they can give us their critical feedback and tell us, you know, what is it you want to edit or take in, whatever. You know, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. If you guys want to send notes to Kayhan, Maura, and Kate on the draft that they have, you know, you know, cross these, add these, take these, move these, whatever.
It's already on a Google Doc, so I mean, you guys can, you guys can do all that.
I'll share it with everyone.
Excellent. Thank you very much. If you don't mind, then we'll move on.
Can I just clarify, Carlos?
Yes.
So for next month, are we looking for an updated resolution and a public-facing statement, two separate documents?
Linda, what do you think? Can we have it? Or you need more time?
Um, I think we can have it. We're also working on an article that'll be in the newsletter, which will kind of pave the way as well, I think, a little bit and kind of set the tone for this.
Oh, what? Then maybe you should share the article with the board before the meeting so that maybe we can come up with a good addition to the article or just a statement added to the article from the board saying blah, blah, blah. Fair enough?
Well, the article.
It's blah, 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 Jay. Don't, don't laugh.
The article will be going to press near the end of this month. So I don't think, we can still share it, but I don't think we'd be able to add any. Well, it really depends on the timing, but we may not be able to add anything to it. But we can definitely, for the next newsletter reference fact, or, you know, somehow tie that in. So.
Okay. Everybody happy? Okay. Let's go with Election Day. I need a motion. You saw the three possible motions, close the library.
Carlos, you're the only one that has those.
Oh.
You're the only one that has three possible.
Sorry, I'm sorry. How about if I, if I lead you by the nose and tell you which are the three motions that you can say, and then you decide, and then you argue. Okay. Motion number one, close the library to staff and patrons and declare November 3rd a paid holiday for staff. Motion number two, close the library for patrons and have staff continue to work in the building. Motion number three, keep the library open for staff and patrons. Kate, comments?
I should probably know this. What is the
What we need in the past?
Policy? What is the governor's polit, didn't he issue something about this?
He did. So in, yeah, in my memo, it says that he has made just this November 3rd, 2020, a statewide holiday for all government offices. It is unclear, though, from the executive order that he passed, whether he meant merely state offices or units of, all units of local government. We've reached out to our attorneys. They have said that it is squishy and up to each local board to decide what they would like to do.
What other, do we know what other libraries are doing?
It's all over the map. Some are closing, some are staying open.
We do allow the staff two hours to go vote anywhere.
The policy, actually, it's a little more nuanced, but just to clarify, because we have staff on the call, I don't want them thinking like, oh, why have I never gotten that? So the, the policy is that if they, if their work schedule prevents them from being able to easily access a polling place, the library will pay for up to two hours for them to go to their polling place on Election Day in order. for them to go to their polling place on Election Day in order to vote.
Okay, so I need a motion. One, two or three?
Can we talk about it for a sec?
Sure.
Okay, um, so schools are closed. Would, does that affect what the library would do? I mean, does, would you have, we're still going to be for the most part closed, so it's not like you'd have more people using the library that day.
Yeah, we're open from four to eight that day.
Okay.
Questions? Anybody else?
Does Kate have a preference?
Do I?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I asked Mora. Did you ask Kate?
I, I don't. I mean, I think the intent behind this was twofold from the governor. One was to ensure that people have ample opportunities to vote, either early voting or Election Day, and I think that we have a policy in place that already addresses that. And I think the other thing was to help cut down on overburdening the polling places. Our numbers have been so low that I don't, I think we could potentially, if it was pre-COVID times, help by closing because it would free up our parking lot, but our parking lot has been, if you've come by any days, you'll know, like, very empty. So there's plenty of overflow parking available. On the other hand, like, would this be a nice benefit and just like a little add-on for staff? Sure, of course it would. Not everyone is physically working in the building, like Linda's a great example, that she comes into the building very rarely, so like if we give this to all staff, it is kind of nice. So I, I can really see, like Abby said earlier, I can really see both sides.
And not all staff work, or I'm sorry, not all staff live here in Northbrook, like, right?
The furthest staff we have is someone who lives in Wisconsin.
Yeah, so by closing the library, you at least, people don't have to schlep in for those folks that don't live within this village.
It seems also that it would be that closing the library, if you're closing it for staff and patrons, it's somewhat, is it symbolic to close it and do, is that?
We're doing the bus.
Well, they've never been declared a state holiday, so we've not closed, because there's been no reason to.
Is there a chance that the governor will clarify this, and then if you decide to remain open, then he's going to decide to close it, or no?
You can flip a coin.
They don't ever like to comment on what libraries should do. The whole pandemic, I'm like, give us information, and they're like, you guys, you can figure it out. So we've gotten to become public health officials.
So, but the, the village is closed, I mean, right?
No, the village is open because they are a polling place.
Oh, so they are, they are open, okay, but schools are closed.
Maybe we'll have some people that go to the village, come to the library and borrow a book or something.
Or even schools, right, or even students who aren't in school.
Yeah, I would think that if it weren't for the pandemic, there would be a lot more people using the library that day. But because of the pandemic, I don't know if, that's what I was going to say too. This is just for this year, right, Kate?
It is literally just for November 3rd.
And you're really talking about four hours, right, because you're only open four days anyway. So it's really a half day.
I say close the library.
Yeah, I agree.
Close it for everyone.
I say leave the library open, but I'm outvoted. We did it in the past, and
Kayhan?
There is very few people that will take the two hours.
I just think we don't want to open it up to a lot of people having nothing to do and going to the library. It's another thing to consider. We don't know that that would happen.
Yeah, I think for me, what's compelling is, in fact, you have a pandemic and it's only open half a day anyway. I mean, it's four hours, I mean, so.
Give me a motion, Kayhan.
So a motion to close the library on Election Day.
We forgot which number it was, or some.
Oh, number one.
One.
I, I moved to.
It is in our, it is in our.
Yeah, it's right here.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, move to close the library, and close that schedule for holiday.
Number one.
All right, Jennifer, oh God, please.
Did we have a second, Carlos?
Mora seconded it.
Oh, Mora did, oh.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yeah.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Glabinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzy?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
You guys, you guys just made the staff on the call very happy.
We discussed it with Kate, and we both agree that number three is the motion. You guys are voting it.
I just get to make a motion. No, staff, staff will be very happy about it.
Okay, draft tax levy discussion. Anna, please tell us.
In the packet, there were two options. I showed option one with a 3% tax levy increase and option two, keeping the tax levy flat or at 0%. You know, the, the financials are there. We had to cut some lines to keep it flat. But, I mean, we can, we can make it work. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, or if people want to see different, a different scenario.
So the, um, just the items that you had, that percentage increases, like, do we have good estimates? Like, for example, the insurance cost, like, which one is more likely? Is it going to be 2 and, 2.5 or 5%? Like, which would be the more likely scenario?
I would think it would be 5%, Jamie, but had to, you know, cut lines.
Yeah, and that, like, I guess, like, materials, like, 12 point, like, just how have, have we been trending, like, have we, like, overall been increasing, like?
We always want to keep materials at 12% of the operating budget, and at the 3% tax levy increase, it's at 12.1, and at roughly the 0%, I kept it at 11.8. So it's pretty close, like, we'll always try to keep that number at 12% of the total expense just because that's what is recommended for all libraries to do, if they can.
We have this year, of course, been spending a significantly higher amount on eresources, so we've had to do some juggling. Anna and I just met with one of our managers this week to talk about that because just the holds, we try to keep a three to one holds ratio, and our ebook, so we've been buying a lot of ebooks, and ebooks are, of course, significantly more expensive than other books. So, so I, you know, if we do keep, if we do the 0%, we can make anything work that the board would like, but it would probably mean that we would have to pull back on like, like, if we want to increase the ebooks, because that's what people are looking at, we would have to pull back in other areas. So it's always a balancing act.
For what it's worth, we do not have an economy that guarantees, grants us race at this point. I would think that if it was my pocket, the pocket of the public, then I would say, let's stay flat and let them give a break for about one year. We can always raise it next year. We have had increases substantially more than 3%. We need to, we can make it up the following year if the economy takes, goes up again. So I would recommend a zero. Okay, hearing no more discussion, we don't have to vote on anything at this point, Anna, right?
That is correct, but would you like me to just show? I mean, if you want it to be zero, I don't have to break it out by line. I break it out by line just so that you can see kind of what a budget would look like. I, I think if you want it to be zero, I, I wouldn't really provide any other details.
Just work it out internally with Kate on what you want to use the money for, and, and that's it. We don't have to see it, nobody else needs to see it.
Well, that'll be done with the budget.
That'll be done with the budget in the spring, where you'll get the detailed breakdown, and we'll have all the supporting documentation. This is a lot of estimates, because we just don't know yet. So it's to help the board make an informed decision about what they want to do with the levy.
And when do we make that decision, Gwen?
You can make the decision on the levy next month.
Okay.
And then the budget will be done later.
Jay? Yeah, you know, last year, didn't we have like a very small increase in the levy?
We actually had a decrease in the levy last year because of, and it had to do with the debt service, because I had put money in the operating fund the year before for debt service that we, that we took out of last year's tax levy because we knew we were going to have, we were going to do the bond issuance. So actually, in 2000, the 19, 2019 tax levy for fiscal year 21, there was a little bit of a decrease because of the bond issuance, like, I didn't, I didn't have the transfer to debt service be as high.
I remember there was an issue of the, the money, transfer of money.
Right.
So this will be two years, if we stay flat, this will be two years in a row that we've kept it without increasing.
You are correct.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
And hold on, one more thing, Carlos, with Jay's comment. Because the debt service number increased in the next year, that takes away money from the general fund. So, because we look at the levy over all three of the funds, operating the special revenue and debt service. So if you look at page 102 of the packet, it, there's a, the property tax levy history. You'll actually see that the general fund levy went from 7.439 to 7.298, and that's because we had to increase the debt service levy. So if, I, I mean, if we wanted to keep it flat, we could keep the general fund flat at 7,439. That'll increase the overall levy, but that would be, you know, due to the debt service increase. Does that make sense?
Anna, what page was that?
107.
10, is it 107?
102.
102. I, I have it as page 102.
Anna, when you look at the collections from August, I thought we were looking like 90% of the actual taxes, is that right?
We have collected 90% of our tax levy through.
So, through.
Through the end of August.
Okay, so 10% non-collection, is that low or high?
For this period, for at this time, I mean, we still have time to collect money.
Right.
I, I think it's, I mean, we're in good shape for this fiscal year.
Well, what I'm focusing on is whether or not next year, we might be seeing a higher amount of uncollected taxes. Because I don't know that the economy is necessarily going to improve dramatically, and if it's a tail effect where we're, you know, seeing people having economic hardship coming through the winter, then I would think that when you're starting to look into what collections look like in the March, you know, period, when we have the next payment, that we might expect to see the same or lower in terms of our actual collection rate.
In 2008, when we went through the recession, we were very worried about this. We did not have that happen to us. Our uncollected property tax revenue has always been at about 2%, 2 to 3%. Even in that recession that occurred, and, and we were worried about it, and we were watching spending at that time, and it, we, we just didn't, it didn't affect us like we thought it was going to. So I don't know how to answer your question, Jay, because it didn't, like, it didn't affect us. Do you know what I mean? So I don't know if we're going to see that next year, if that makes sense.
I understand you can't predict it. I'm just trying to figure out whether or not the 10% is within like a reasonable range of what we would expect at this point in time, or if it might be.
Last year, we had collected, we were at like 99% of collections.
For the year or for August?
Through the end of August. I don't have, I, I don't, hold on. I just, I mean, but we still have time to have collections come in. So, you know, I don't think we can use what, year over year comparison. I just, like, if we go back to the last recession, it did not affect us. It, it might. I, I mean, we can't, we can't talk to that. But I guess, based upon your comment that, you know, it would be zero, are actually, the general fund operating levy would actually go down. It would go down a couple hundred thousand dollars because the debt service payments went up.
Right.
If we keep the overall levy 0%.
Yeah, but you still head in there 100,000, and another two lines of like 50, 250,000 of income from interest, gifts and the like, and I don't know if that's realistic either.
But I also have 100,000 of expenses to offset that other income, Jay, so it, it's, it washes itself. Do you know, you know what I mean? Like, I have, if you look at the expenses, I have $100,000 of other expense that kind of goes against the other income, so if I took both of them out, it would be the same thing. And I decreased fines and the, the fines and fees, and I, and I decreased interest income year over year as well, you know, from last year to this year, like what I, what I have, so.
We don't have fines, but we have fees. Is that where the 25?
Yes, we have fees for maker space, we have fees for damaged materials, lost items, non-resident card fees, like all of that goes into that line. So I, I guess what I'm saying is rather than it, to really keep the operating fund flat, we would have to have the general fund be at 7,400, not 7,200. And so you'd have a little bit of an increase, but not 3%. If, if that makes sense. And I can show you what that would look like.
And we don't need to make a decision now. Can we, can you give us those figures for the next meeting?
Yes.
Questions, anybody? Okay. We are going to put that in the agenda for next meeting. Let's go to Cedar Lane project review.
All right, I'm going to share this PowerPoint. That was weird. There was feedback there for a second. So Tom Popeard from the village gave this to me. He couldn't be here tonight because he has another village committee meeting, but he, but I wanted to share this with you, get your feedback, which I will then share with him. And if you do have any follow-up questions, he would be able to come to next month's meeting. So this is the same PowerPoint that was shared with the village board at the end of August. And so they, as we've mentioned, have been doing a, they've hired consultants to look at how they can make Cedar Lane more pedestrian and biker friendly. So, why is it not letting me advance? Nope, hang on. So this is the existing, as you can see, this was pre-COVID, because there are cars, a lot of cars in our lot. And the goal of this is to look at not only Cedar Lane, but also a little bit of Cherry, and also address the issue of the trucks hitting our buildings that we've. and also address the issue of the trucks hitting our building that we've talked about a lot. So they, um, just some different pictures to give you perspective. As you can see from the study that the consultant did, people drive too fast on Cedar. So the goal is to decrease that, um, as well as to make it more of a campus feel, put more bike paths in and help us with our truck situation. So they presented two design options and option A is this one. As you can see, there is a crosswalk. Let me see if I can do my annotation thing here. So they put like a crosswalk, which is in here. I can't really circle things well without a mouse. You'll notice that the side over here has more parking available, um, which is wonderful. Uh, because as you know, parking is, pre-COVID parking was always an issue. These would be thirty-minute spots. This would also make the entryway, I'm gonna try, sorry, I'm learning new things. I'm gonna see what happens here. Oh, do you see my things staying where it is? Does it show? Yeah, okay. So, um, oh, I did something weird. I think I just deleted something. Um, so what did I do?
No, nothing. I was just gonna say, can you make that a different color? Because it's red and everything's red, your little pointer.
Yeah, I don't know how to, let's see.
It's fine.
I thought I did. Let's see. Nope. Nope, I'll continue drawing. Drawing is fine. Um.
Hey, can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course, Abby.
Is there really room? I'm trying to visualize this. There's, I could wear those parking lot, uh, parking spaces, the additional? Is that gonna go over the landscaping? That's what I'm picturing there. And there's.
It's gonna go over a little bit of, a little bit of the grass.
Okay.
Um, and the goal is to decrease the entire width of the street. So that's something.
Carlos, you're on mute. You're on mute, Carlos.
You're drawing in front of the village, not the library.
Yeah.
Hang on. Oh, you're right.
It slipped down.
You're right. It slipped. I don't, okay, hang on. I'm gonna just stop sharing for a second and go back because I don't know what I did here. This is what happens when you.
Maura, help her.
Well, it's, the issue is that I, I'm using someone else's PowerPoint to try and navigate through all of this. So, hang on. I'm gonna just go really old school. I'm not gonna put the presentation mode on. We're gonna just look at it this way. Is everyone cool with this?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna move. Part of it is that all of your wonderful faces were in, right in front of what I was trying to, um, do.
You click on the, the button on top, you can reduce the faces.
I did. I did. So now you're a disembodied voice, Carlos.
Always fun like that.
Okay, so, so if you see my mouse over here where this now becomes a two-way and we now have, um, people being dropped off in vans coming this way, which I have some pictures here that I'm gonna show you. There's also now a bike path, um, over here on the west side of Cedar, right by Greenbrier, which, um, they're probably gonna make twelve feet because of COVID stuff. And then the goal of this is to give it more of a campus feel. Obviously for us, a big plus is making it better for people to get into, people with vans and trucks and buses to get in. So I did, I did a little video kind of, or picture showcase. So moving forward with this option, the trucks, vans, um, passenger, you know, vans would drive in through the Village Hall entrance. They would turn left. And then here where there's currently a fire lane, this would be turned into a paved road. And so the village would lose a couple spots in their lot, which they're, they're coolest. And then they would turn left and they would drop people off right here. They would walk down the sidewalk and enter the building. Then they would keep going and they would exit out the, um, onto Cedar. So this area right here is what would become two-way. Where right now you can see the white arrow and it's only going in. This would allow for two-way traffic, which would allow for this with things being dropped off. So does that make sense?
So, but they would have to be careful here because there's traffic coming from.
Correct. So there would need to be like a stop sign or something that would allow for that.
Question?
Yeah.
What happens to the under our current sort of underpass? That's not the right word, but drop off? Would that still be utilized by cars?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Uh, Kate, where, where your arrow is showing now, that part of the walk can be shaved down so that the, the buses can get close to the columns and allow people to immediately get under the, the, the roof there in case it is raining?
Correct.
Okay, we need to tell them to reduce that sidewalk.
Well, we're not, we're not that far along yet, Carlos. We're still at the kind of concept phase.
All right.
But I will absolutely tell them that.
Good.
Um, so let me show you guys option B. Option B gives us more of a drop-off area. So like you can see like right over here, um, where I just drew the box, this would be the drop-off area. So people, we would not do the kind of drive through the Village Hall piece. They would drop people off here. They would walk, walk down the ramp or the stairs. There would be no additional parking over here. It does still do the same thing that option A did in reducing the width of Cedar, which is a major thing that we want to do. And I'll just show you the other, you know, and then this is the Village Hall side of it where they are adding additional parking. It's, um, you know, so, so we would be getting more parking still, just not as much as we are in A.
And that parking, that, or that drop-off would be for, that would take care of people being dropped off and, but like would vans go there?
Every, everything that doesn't fit under the underpass would go there.
So they have to walk in, they have to walk in the rain and they have to slide down.
Yeah, I don't think we can ask our senior patrons to walk down the ramp or the stairs, especially.
I agree with Maura a hundred percent. Option B is not for us.
I agree.
Right.
Yep.
So, which is great news because option A is also what the Village Board really liked. So, but I'd love, um, to know if you guys have other questions and I may not be able to answer them, but I certainly can bring them back to Tom and give your feedback.
Can I ask a question? Can I just ask a question? So you, so there are, there, you have those people walking there? Those pe, those red people? So it's not close to traffic.
Those are arrows to show direction of traffic.
Right, so.
Are you talking about? Yeah, okay.
But so it's not close to traffic. You're not like saying that it's gonna be.
No.
But we're reducing it. You're reducing it to two, uh, smaller, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Kate, on option, on option A.
Yeah.
Can we enlarge the, the pathway that crosses Cedar so that bikes that come through the bike path can turn and go straight into our lot? Otherwise, they would have to get off the bike and walk it across the.
Oh, so you wanted to come down over that curved area?
Right.
Let me make sure that I'm following.
But then you're gonna encourage people to walk down the ramp.
Kind of like here.
There, right.
Yeah.
Right.
I think one of the problems there, Carlos, might be that if we make that wider, it's gonna encourage people to walk on the road portion of the ramp where your people are turning up, which I think people are sort of tempted to do anyway and it's very unsafe.
Well, we have a crosswalk. I, I'm, I'm just saying, uh, where the crosswalk is, make the crosswalk a little bit wider so people can, so the bicycles can also turn there.
They're also talking about doing a raised crosswalk.
Oh, I see.
So, so it'll be, you know, the angled with the flat top. So that'll also serve as kind of like a speed bump deterrent as well.
Yeah, they, we don't want the bikes to go over the speed bump because that could cause accident.
Most likely with this option, um, the ra, our ramp and stairs will need to change on our side of things. You know, because right now the entrance to the ramp is right here, the stairs are down here. And what we don't want to have happen is have people park here and instead of wanting to walk all the way down here to then come all the way back to the door, instead they would just probably still cross there because we have this, um, you know, because we still have the stairs right here. So they would probably still cross right in front of it. So we would want to readjust all of that. We paused the landscaping plan, which was supposed to be happening this year until we finished all of this, if you recall. And so all of the landscaping will be addressed with this, but we wanted to wait to see what the village was doing with this project before we move forward with bringing people to you to talk about that.
Okay.
Kate, can I ask a question about Cherry Lane? Those are crosswalks on Cherry?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're gonna put stop signs there.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask you because that intersection is terrible because I live to the left and you just, that's a bad intersection. I usually just, usually just go around the other way.
Kate, is, uh, you, you, it's mentioned here that they're gonna put a four-way stop there?
Yep.
And so does that mean then that people will be able to turn left onto Cherry from Cedar? Or will that still be prohibited?
No, you can turn left.
From the north side.
Yeah, from the north side, right.
So you can turn left. Can you turn left?
Yes.
Oh, but you can't, but you can't cross, uh, but you can't cross Cherry though, right?
No, you can't go through, no.
And so with the four-way stop, will that be permitted? I guess that's the question.
That is a good question. I don't know. I'll ask Tom.
The reason that you cannot do it now is because they are offset. They are not.
I would imagine you still can't because you can't, like, even if someone is stopping, like, because they're offset from a timing standpoint, I just think it's dangerous.
Yeah, if you go offset, it could confuse the cars coming on Cherry from both sides. They will think that you're trying to turn and instead you're going straight up into Cedar on the other side of Cherry and that could cause an accident. That's why they don't allow you to get in there.
But that'll really slow people, hopefully, coming from all directions on Cedar. Because I agree, people do go too fast in that general area.
Yeah, I mean Cherry, people are going pretty fast.
They are, especially if you're coming up through the viaduct, which I, drives me nuts.
Yeah, people are coming, they're, they're coming off that viaduct very fast.
People just fly. They fly.
Okay, I noticed that you guys are enjoying, uh, your.
Traffic engineering, yes.
Traffic engineering, but, uh, I need to close this session.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I have one too. Oh, no.
Maura, go ahead.
Okay. My question was, um, you mentioned having to move the, um, the stair possibly that, that goes down. Has there been any discussion about possibly moving it to the, um, the closer to Cherry, to that corner?
No, because we haven't gotten, like, this is still so conceptual.
So conceptual, okay, all right.
They haven't even picked an architect yet.
An idea.
What's that, Carlos?
It's an idea, you know, something.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so, so Maura, here's what I was thinking. I was thinking that once the board, the Village Board, like officially approves the project and they go to get an architect, that we would work with them and that we at that time could start looking for a landscape architect who could work with us and the Village's board architect. We don't, we've never worked with a landscape architect in Anna or my recollection. So we would have to like do a whole process where we would send out, um, an RFP and the board would do interviews with the architects. But I didn't want to start that until we had more definition and when this was like gonna, might happen.
Okay.
Thank you all. I need a motion to adjourn.
Um, Carlos, do you want to do the agenda building for next month?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to do the agenda building for next month first?
Um, sure. Guys, you see the bottom of the.
You're the only one that has it, Carlos.
Oh, no. Okay, uh, we're gonna talk about the per capita grants. Okay, uh, the EDI statement, uh, both versions, the public one and the internal one. Linda, you're, you're invited. Staff appreciation week, which is always a favorite of everybody. And the tax levy for Anna, she's the one that gets it. And anything else?
Do we need to vote on the parking or the Cedar Lane thing?
Not yet.
No, it's just to give feedback.
Okay.
Anything else? Coming once, going twice? Motion to adjourn, please, anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second. I'll second it?
Who did that? Sharon?
Karen.
Call to the vote, Jennifer.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Globbinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Froome?
Yes, thank you all, and we'll see you next month.